Good evening and hello everyone and welcome to Reading Recap's very first candidate forum, being held for candidates running for for election and reelection to the town of Reading. We are pleased to be joined in order appearing on the ballot, the following candidates for select board. Melissa Murphy, incumbent for reelection, Chris Cook, candidate for election, and Tony DeRizzo, candidate for election. To begin, we'd like to invite each candidate in the order appearing on the ballot to start by offering opening statements, closing and closing arguments will be in the reverse order. Please limit your opening statement to two minutes. Thank you. Melissa?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. For those that don't know me, I'm Melissa Murphy and I am a current member of the select board and running for reelection. I've been a Reading resident for eighteen years. My husband Brian and I are raising our four children here in town. I've volunteered in the community since my kids were young, starting with a local mom's group called Connect the Tots. I spent six years on the Wood End PTO and served on the Wood End School Council. I'm also a five-year town meeting member and have been on the select board since May of 2024. Through my various volunteer roles, I have gained valuable insight and found it rewarding to see the positive impact of community collaboration. While on the select board, I've worked with residents and town staff to address critical community issues and initiatives. This includes resolving trash collection problems, tackling inequalities with our tiered water rates for multi-unit buildings, and supporting the ACE Committee. I've prioritized reasonable spending, especially as we face significant debt exclusions in the near future. Additionally, I've advocated for a reasonable compliance solution for MBTA communities. The select board's appointments this summer were crucial in providing town meeting members with a choice between two solutions. I supported the implementation of second water meters after thoroughly understanding their benefits for Reading residents. I also worked with local business owners to address concerns regarding parking kiosks to gather critical feedback. I spent the entire day in the CBS Haven Street parking lot, speaking with residents, business owners, and town staff about the kiosks and their impact on our community. Most importantly, I've promoted moderation to restore balance on our select board by encouraging common sense thinking and willingness to listen and compromise. These accomplishments reflect my commitment to transparency, collaboration, and creating a more effective working environment. I hope to continue my work on the select board and I would greatly appreciate your vote on or before April eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank the Reading Recap, Chuck and Nancy for hosting and contributing to this forum. And also thanks to Melissa and Tony for being part of this forum so we can share ideas and our visions for the future of Reading. Although many in this room may know who I am, since I am somewhat new to town, let's give a quick background introduction. My name is Christopher Cook and I live on Grove Street. While new to Reading, I've had connections to the local area for many years. I'm a graduate of Andover High School and UMass Amherst. After graduation, I began my career working in community banking at the old Stonem Savings Bank, for those that remember, and moved throughout various roles before transitioning to a different role in a banking regulator as a bank examiner at the Massachusetts Division of Banks. After various promotions through the examiner ranks and into the management ranks, I am now in my thirteenth year of public service at the division, which I'm proud of. My wife Brittany and I were fortunate enough to be able to settle into Reading after an extensive and competitive housing search. We were drawn to the many benefits the town provides, including the quality of public schools for our son Landon, the proximity to the metro Boston area, access to public transportation, among many others. Brittany and I are committed to residing in Reading for the long term and are invested in the town's success throughout the years ahead. As a candidate and hopeful member of the select board, I would like to use my experience and financial acumen to help guide the town through what appears to be a crossroads of many impactful decisions coming up that will affect the fiscal health of the town. A major focus of mine as a select board member would be to ensure that we can provide the best services that residents need and want while being cognizant of increasing cost pressures on not only the town, but all taxpayers and residents. We must strike a balance between the competing needs and ensure the select board instills discipline and oversight into the fiscal affairs of the town. As a select board member, I hope to provide a balanced approach to the complex issues that will face the town and while doing so, ensure Reading remains a great place to live, have a business, and raise a family for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeRizzo.
Thank you. My name is Tony DeRizzo. I don't know how many of you recognize me or have heard my name. I've been a Reading resident since nineteen ninety-two. We got, my wife and I got married in St. Agnes Church with Father Arthur Flynn and his famous no pictures during the ceremony policy, for those who remember. At that time, I actually became an accidental member of Town Meeting when my wife and I both voted for me for Town Meeting as we were doing our absentee ballots because we weren't going to be around. And next thing I knew, I was on Town Meeting. I've been on Town Meeting on and off for the last thirty years. We raised both our children in Reading schools. We moved to a house back in ninety-four, sorry, that was ninety-five. And at that point, around two thousand is when I really got started into the real politics of town. At that point, we were looking at the closing of the landfill and I got, I was notified. And from there on, I got notified for virtually every Walkers Brook development because of the location of my home. And there were many contentious meetings, but I also learned that you had to attend the meetings if you wanted to know what was going on. So I've been attending conservation, conservation, ZBA, CBDC meetings for the last thirty years. I've been spent the last seven years since, never mind. I've spent seven years on CBDC where we handled a lot of contentious issues and I want to bring that knowledge of how to resolve to the select board. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm pleased to welcome Nancy Quadros, who will be asking the questions tonight. So candidates will each be given a series of up to ten questions if time allows. Turns will be, turns, turns will be rotating for who responds first to ensure to cover all questions within the allotted time. We ask that responses be at a maximum of two minutes, two minutes per question. A yellow card, as you know, will come up at thirty seconds. Each candidate has the opportunity for two rebuttals and those are one minute each. And without further ado, I'll have Nancy ask the first question and the order for the first question starts with Tony, then Melissa, and then Chris.
All right. Well, thank you, Chuck, and thank you, everyone, for being here. We're excited to hear you today. None of the candidates that are here today have had any prior knowledge of the questions being asked and we're looking forward to a really good conversation from all of them. And so I'll go ahead and jump into the first question. We are incredibly grateful for the volunteers that helped to shape our community. Volunteering to run for local government is a tremendous undertaking and a huge commitment to our town if elected. What motivated you to choose to run for election or reelection?
Well, thank you. The reason that I'm running this time is simply because I'm seeing something in town that while it's been an undercurrent for a while, has really reared its head recently. And that's there's an anger that people are starting to argue about the most petty things, be they online or even in meetings themselves. And the problem I feel is that there are attacks upon people and people who can't handle the attacks, that they're unfair. I fortunately am the type of person who can handle these attacks. I've handled attacks from people on the CPDC for years. You want us to talk about angry people? Talk about somebody who lives next to a development that's going up next door. You'll have quite a few people giving you advice and calling you names sometimes. So what I'm looking to do is to basically set a tone for the select board, for the town, and that tone should exist not just in the meetings themselves, but exist outside. If you're going to be a leader, you need to lead virtually twenty-four seven at this point. Thank you.
Melissa?
So my motivation for running has been consistent, I think, since I ran the first time in 2023. And that's really to promote moderation and restore the balance of the select board. There's been some turmoil over the years and I just don't think that the select board was working well with the residents of the town because they were bickering more among themselves than anything else. So I really am trying to bring some respect, moderation back to the select board. So we do the job of the residents of Reading. I also felt like Reading's residents' voices weren't always being heard. So I really have tried to make sure that if a resident reaches out to me, I fully understand what's going on. And like with the parking kiosks, I went out to the Haven Street Lot to talk to residents, to talk to business owners, to talk to town staff, to understand the issues that were arising with the kiosks. Also, I just want to, again, I just want to see a better working relationship with the select board and the residents of this town. The school committee has done a very good job of having more back and forth and I'd like to see that come over into the select board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, sure. So although, again, I'm very new in town and this is a bit of an unorthodox path to the select board so soon in my residency, I always knew once I settled on a town and we settled on a town that I was going to live in, that I wanted to help the town and volunteer. In a prior town I lived in, Andover, which is kind of a pure community, I was very involved in town meetings. I went to select board meetings, FinCon meetings, open town meeting. I was very interested in serving. I was a finalist at the retirement board in 2014, although I was not selected. So honestly, I always thought that I would start my path in the town on, you know, FinCon or some other board. But obviously, when the opportunity arose to consider a seat on the select board, I figured, why not now? I think I have a very good background in both, a curiosity from my prior, you know, town experience and then also my job working as a bank examiner and financial background that I think I'd bring a very good mix of skills to the select board, especially considering some very large projects we have coming up and a lot of decisions that will impact the fiscal health of the town. I think this is a very unique blend of both career experience and knowledge that I'd like to provide to the town in service.
Thank you. So the next order, the order for the next question starts with Chris, goes to Tony and then Melissa. So.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Next question. What unique perspective or experience would you bring to the select board if elected?
Sure. So I'd say a unique experience, again, kind of pointing to the experiences that I had in living in Andover, being very involved, seeing how town operations work, the town budgeting process, which can be very complex. I think that mix along with my current government service, working for the state, would provide a great mix of experience and ability to help the town navigate the upcoming fiscal challenges and ensure that we maintain a strong fiscal health going forward.
Thank you. Tony?
Well, I think what I really bring is integrity. In my prior job, I was the IT manager of a hundred million dollar company. I was the IT guy. I worked with our technicians who were on the road repairing forklifts. I worked with the CEO. I made sure that whatever I told people was the truth, whether they would like to hear it or not. It was always my best judgment, my best information at the time. Sometimes that made people upset, but sometimes it was the only path forward. And I think instead of trying to cover things and say them in a more quiet way, sometimes you have to admit to the facts and work against them. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
I think my unique perspectives, one being that I am on the board currently and I have been since May of 2024. Also, I am the type of person that likes to get out there, talk to people. I've met with several residents over the past eleven months on various topics. Some were about trash collection and some were about water rates and, you know, some were about MBTA turnback tracks or kiosks. So I am the type of person that gets out there. I want to learn about what the issue is and then try to figure out how we can resolve that issue. I think my background, when I was working, I was a paralegal for eight plus years in a big Boston law firm. So my background is strong in researching and analyzing issues and then being able to communicate them clearly to everyone else. And then also, I'm a mom of four. I can deal with chaos really well. So I feel like that's a unique perspective that I can bring to the board.
Thank you. So the next order, the next question is Melissa, Chris, and Tony.
Thank you, Chuck. Next question is, what do you consider to be the most pressing issue facing the Reading community?
I think right now, the most pressing issue is probably the two large debt exclusions that we have in our pipeline. Both projects, I think, are extremely important to the town. But I am very concerned that if we are not smart about spending money, we are gonna, A, look to have to do another override in the next couple of years and B, we're gonna push people out of the town. And one of our projects, the recalc project, is for seniors. And I'm very concerned that if we are not very careful in the money we spend, we are gonna end up pushing the seniors out of town. So I think that we have to be very smart with decisions we make going forward on the Pleasant Street Center and how we can get the most revenue out of that. I also think that if we can redevelop the Eastern Gateway area into commercial residential area, that would be huge for the town of Reading. Bringing in more commercial business would help alleviate some of the residential tax burden.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. I have to agree a little bit with Melissa there, kind of the biggest pressing timely issue is how we handle these two upcoming projects and their upcoming debt exclusion votes. And frame that in the context of our operating budget that is soon to be approved, just continues to rely on an increasing use of free cash, both in the next fiscal year and projected three fiscal years out. Did look back and even just two years ago, back in fiscal year 2024, we only projected to use two point five eight million in free cash this upcoming year. Last year, it was three point five six and now this year it is six million. This increasing continued use of free cash needed to balance the budget is kind of an unsustainable way to do, to run the town, unfortunately. This will eventually probably lead to an override, which no one wants to discuss. It's a very difficult conversation to have. But at the end of the day, the earlier that the select board takes action to address this increasing free cash use and hopefully reduce it, will hopefully stave off and mitigate either the timing or the size of a possible override in the future. We all know what Melrose just went through and their override failed. We all know what Stonem is going through and fourteen million dollar override coming up soon. Obviously, I think we'd all like to have Reading not be in a similar situation and have to have a possible override vote and possibly not receive the support because of the fact that we have two very large projects coming online and the impact to taxes that will have. So I think that's the largest pressing issue that is not only current, but also is something that is lurking in the next three to five years.
Thank you. Tony?
Thank you. Well, you're right. The two debt exclusion projects, Killam and the Recalc Community Center, are pressing and they're immediate. But the real pressing issue is going to be growth. We haven't needed an override over the last several years because we have had the growth. We have had these multi-unit buildings that have come into town, which have helped us to keep the budget growing without actually adding additional burden. Now we've hit pretty much the limit. We need to look at what we're going to do for growth and growth should be done in a sustainable way, planned way, to make sure that whatever we do fits into the character of the town.
Thank you. The order for the next question is Tony, Melissa, and then Chris.
Great. Thanks, Chuck. Next question. How do you intend to collaborate with other board members, especially when there are disagreements on certain issues?
Thank you. Well, first off, on the CPDC, we were collaborating with the other departments all the time. We would work with engineering, we would work with conservation, and we would defer to the experts. On CPDC, we would have stormwater calculations and if there needed to be a change, we allowed the conservation to take it over. I think the problem here is that the question you're asking has two points. You have disagreements and you have arguments. Disagreements allow for reasonable people to come up with a reasonable solution. You may be between one and two and it may be one point two five versus two. It may be one point five right down the middle, but at least both sides get something. When you have an argument, you're at impasse. Nobody is getting anything. Sometimes they're arguing just to argue and at that point, you need to basically shut it down, walk away, come back.
Thank you. Melissa?
I think my biggest thing would be respectful conversation. I think we can all agree that we're not always going to agree with each other, but if you are unable to have respectful conversation, you're not going to get anywhere, kind of what Tony just said. So to collaborate with a board, other boards, town staff, town manager, we all have to listen to each other, take their perspective, and then work together to come to a meeting ground for the residents of Reading.
Thank you. Chris?
Echo similar comments. Both Tony and Melissa totally agree. There's nothing wrong with respectful disagreement. Obviously, you know, rises to the level of personal attacks or arguments, that's unacceptable. It's not going to lead to any progress. Obviously, I'm open to listening to any and all opinions and views from other board members, town staff, residents, businesses, any other committees and boards. Inevitably, when you have a multi-member board, you're going to have disagreements on some very important things, sometimes very trivial things. Obviously, the more important items and issues and concerns can become more heated and debated. And again, when it starts getting to that level, I think there is nothing wrong with sometimes tabling a discussion, letting things cool down to the next meeting. But obviously, hopefully, all members of the board can be respectful and listening to differing opinions and definitely make decisions in the best interest for the entire town.
Thank you. The next question will start with Chris and go to, go to Tony and then Melissa.
Thanks, Chuck. What is your vision for our town and what actions would you take to help us reach that vision?
Sure. Thank you. So I'd say the vision for our town is obviously maintaining it as the same reasons why I moved here. A great place to live, raise a family, and obviously that starts with our school system. Obviously, the school committee has provided a lot of effort in maintaining and increasing the values of the schools. Obviously, this is a great destination. It's very attractive to live in. Affordability can be tough. Took me eighteen months to land on Reading. But obviously with that comes, you know, a lot of demands. You know, we have increasing costs of our budget that are exceeding the revenues that we're allowed to raise. Obviously, everyone knows kind of the only way out of that sometimes is growth. But the growth needs to be measured and appropriate and not out of scale for the community. Eastern Gateway, I think, is the last very large piece of land that we can develop and provides significant tax revenue, but there's a lot of competing priorities. People want different things out of it. There's also private interests that are involved as well. So hopefully, something over the next, hopefully, three years, sometimes maybe more, we'll be able to get a better idea of what can be built there. But overall, I'm also cognizant of the other populations in town such as seniors who may feel like to be priced out because of the ever-increasing property tax increases. So we must be cognizant of that. So as a board member, I'm hoping to provide, strike a balance and make sure that as many residents' needs are met as a lot of wants, but sometimes it has to be needs. And anything we can do to provide the most services at great service levels at an affordable price is what I'm striving to do.
Thank you. Tony?
Could you repeat the question just so I know what I'm answering again?
Absolutely. Yes, happy to. What is your vision for our town and what actions would you take to help us reach that vision?
All right. Thank you. That's what I thought it was, but I just wanted to check. My vision for the town is basically community. Right now, I don't feel that we have a town where you can basically grow up, come back, raise your own family, and retire. We, everything is pretty much single-family homes. I know several people who would love to be able to downsize, but they can't find anything in town to downsize too. What we need really is to have a breadth of available housing that fit basically your entire life cycle. And that's what I would like to bring forward so that we can stay in town, you can have a community. People are not being forced out. They can move as they need. They can, you have a starter home. They can move to a home where they can raise their children. And once they're out of the house, they can move someplace where they can retire.
Thank you. Melissa?
I think that over the next three, five, ten years, we're going to see a lot of growth in town. And I think it's going to be growth with housing and in commercial base, which I think will be very important to alleviate the tax burden on the residents. We have a gem of Eastern Gateway and I think that we really need to think about that area and what our vision is for that area because I really think, kind of what Tony was saying, you could make townhomes over there, condos over there, but have commercial businesses over there, which kind of really will improve all of Reading. With that being said, the challenge in that area, we have our MLD over there. I believe they're even looking to expand and we also want to balance this growth by, and preserve Reading for what it is. So there is a challenge there in keeping Reading the town that everyone moved into and we don't want to make it a city. But I do think that we will have some large growth over the next five, three, five, ten years.
Thank you. So the order for the next question starts with Melissa and goes to Chris and then Tony.
Great. Next question. We have two capital projects in process for our town. The new Killam School Project and the Reading Center for Active Living Project. As you know, if one or both of these projects are approved at Town Meeting, there will be a special election in May to secure funding. What would your message be to residents who are concerned about the potential tax increase necessary to bring these projects to life?
Both of these projects are very important to our town. The Killam School is necessary for the students at Killam. If we do not pass Killam, we are going to lose forty-two million dollars of state funding on that school. And that school could be condemned if it, this first stage, if the residents don't pass it in May, it could potentially even be condemned if we have to look at a long-term plan to get the money from the town alone. That is a very important project. The Recalc Project is also an extremely important project. I am a little concerned that the recalc solution that is being put forward is, the size and the scope of that project makes me a little nervous. I think that we may have gone beyond the needs that we were looking to fill for our senior community of programming space, private spaces for nurses and like our, all our senior town staff. But I think we may have gone a little too far. So I am a little concerned about the size and the scope of that project. My hope would be is that if both projects go forward and get voted in, which I support them, but I think we need to be very careful on our spending going forward and we really need to figure out how we can offset some of these costs. And we have to think about what we will do with the Pleasant Street Center current day. And we also may want to look into some options for our seniors that are on the current circuit breaker and how maybe we can take the burden off of them a little bit because I don't want to see these projects push seniors out of their homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. Yes. I do believe both the Killam School and Recalc are very important projects to the town and I do support them going forward. Obviously, there is some concern over the overall cost of both of these projects at the same time. However, obviously with the Killam School and receiving a pretty significant MSBA reimbursement of approximately forty-two million dollars, I think that is something that the town should support and take advantage of. The MSBA process is very competitive. Reading is very lucky to have received a successful bid and hopeful that project moves forward. And that also would be probably a preschool that my son would use. And obviously, it sounds like the current state of Killam, there is some health and safety concerns. So it would be unfortunate if it were to fail and we would have to take immediate action to bring it up to code and probably spend less money to have not a brand-new building. With Recalc, again, it is a project that seems to have been studied for years. There was a Recalc Committee that looked into multiple options, including using the That looked into multiple options, including using the current Pleasant Street Center, which seems to be also outdated and has some of its own possible health and safety issues. And it is something that, you know, you don't want to pit one set of residents against another, parents versus seniors. They both are important. I would like to see both get approved, but I seem to hear a sentiment that. It's a concern about the cost of the Recal out in Simmons Way, even though it has been value-engineered down to get below thirty million. And a lot of it is contingency. The final cost could come out, come in lower. However, obviously, if it is not supported. I think seniors in town obviously deserve some sort of new senior center. And obviously, if it is not supported at a future town meeting, I think they could go back to, let's say, the drawing board. But consider reducing the scope of the project to bring it down to a level that is more supportable and more palatable to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony.
Thank you. As we've said, the Killam School is definitely needs to be rebuilt. We could spend eighty million dollars of our own money with no MSBA. Refund, or whatever you would call it. And end up just repairing the school until it breaks again. Or we can actually get the state money and get a new school built. For a little bit more. And the way I look at the senior center, it's a two thousand nine Pontiac vibe. It's an old car. It's got a lot of miles on it. Yeah, it's working today, but you know you're going to have to replace it. And if you need to replace it, you have to look at what you're going to need in the future. Are you going from a little two-seater? And now you need a minivan because you have in the family? That's the logic that you really use when you're trying to figure out what you're doing next. And I understand the cost can go high. And it's going to sound terrible, and I'm going to say it anyway. But unfortunately, we've got two projects that just rolled off, the high school and the library. And people are not going to see a huge increase. They're going to, some of them might even see a little decrease in their taxes over the next couple of years because of it. So when we do hit these new projects, you're going to see. And I'm not going to call it huge, but you're going to see a bigger increase than you would if we'd gone from one to the next. So we need to look at what the numbers actually come out as. Don't fret before you see the numbers. We can change, there are ways of bringing down those month or yearly costs. And that's what we have to look at.
Thank you. So the order for the next question starts with Tony, goes to Melissa and then Chris.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Next question. The proposed MBTA Turnback Track Project could provide more frequent weekday train service for Reading residents. But it also raises significant concerns. If elected, how would you ensure that infrastructure projects like this. Achieve a fair balance between improving regional translate, transit, apologies. And safeguarding public health, safety, and the environmental integrity of Reading's neighborhoods.
Thank you. If it were up to me, and unfortunately it's not. I would have had the MBTA come in and show the proposal to the CPDC. Make it a planning just as any other major project comes in. What the MBTA has not addressed is where the extra ridership is going to come from. Obviously, it's not going to come from ninety-three north. They're going to go to the Anderson Center. So you're looking at one twenty-nine, ninety-five, and twenty-eight. Which means we're going to end up with traffic at the main intersections in town. And we need to know what that traffic is going to entail and what we can do to go around it. So any of these projects really needs a discussion with the town to understand the impacts. The MBTA came in and they basically said, well, we're legally allowed to do it. We're going to do it. And thankfully, our state delegates stood up for us and said, maybe you guys need to back off. You haven't gone through the processes that you should have for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa.
I think we all can agree that the commuter rail is a huge asset to our town, and no one. Wants to see it go away, but the way the MBTA handled the filing of this turn backtrack, I think, was inappropriate and. Frankly, kind of sneaky. I was extremely impressed by the neighborhood groups that got together to push back on this project. And they really made a huge difference, not only reaching out to the town, but also the state delegate. We know that the MBTA has pulled their proposal, but we fully expect that they will refile. So at this time, I believe they are thinking about doing a traffic study like Tony mentioned. Which I think will be extremely important, because not only will it affect Reading, but it will affect Wakefield and Marrow's as well, and it was. Our understanding, they hadn't reached out to any other community. I would like to see them, and to be frank, if we have another chance to meet with them, I. Mandate for them to reach out to public safety as well. I think it is a huge concern that they haven't reached out to the police chief or the fire chief. Of any of these communities. So they still have a lot of work to do. The other thing that was kind of shocking is that they seemed to be unaware about our new Mallett-Sons-Morgan Conservation Area, where the turn backtrack. Was planned for. So it's my understanding they are also planning on walking that area to get a sense of what that area is like. And there is a consideration of moving the turn backtrack further north, which I think could potentially resolve all problems. Except the traffic. We don't have an answer on that.
Thank you. Chris.
Thank you. Yes, I got a great similar comments to Melissa and Tony. I did attend the turnback meeting with the MBTA, which was obviously very well-attended by people in the local community. Again, I was impressed by the activism of the people in the neighborhood. Obviously, that kind of got caught off guard. By the filing, by the MBTA with the Conservation Commission. As someone who, I do use public transportation, I probably would benefit from increased service. That still means that people in that area also have a right to not have, hopefully, diesel engines running in their backyard for multiple hours per day. Wasn't totally impressed by the presentation by the MBTA. It seems like they. Considered alternatives, but they really didn't have a funding solution. So really, this was the only alternative, and this was the only project they wanted to move forward with. And they probably thought they were going to get it by the Conservation Commission without anyone knowing. But I'm glad that the Conservation Commission and other residents did know. And I think the board should have additional meetings with them if they refile. As Melissa stated, if they have come to a conclusion that they were able to find a different spot for this project. That does not directly impact residents indoor the conservation area and works, that'd be great. However, if they do come back with a similar scopes project, looking to move forward. I would hope that the select board and also our state delegation provides more information and request more information. And hopefully, at the end of the day, I understand the MBTA has tremendous amount of rights to work on their right of way. And at minimum, if they plan to move forward with this spot, I would like to see them provide. Both environmental mitigation, whether it be through monitoring and/or noise barriers, even though I know they tried to say that it wasn't possible. I think we should put up a little bit more of a fight when it comes to a situation like that, if they do decide to move forward with the location as described.
Thank you. So the order for the next question is Chris, Tony and Melissa.
Thanks, everyone. Next question. As you know, our town volunteers are a critical part of our community. If elected, would you encourage more residents to volunteer for boards and committees? If so, how?
Absolutely. As you can see, Reading has numerous amounts of volunteer boards and committees, and I think it's crucial that we have as many residents involved. In the affairs of the town and decision-making. In addition to any elected boards, we have dozens of appointed boards in town forest, conservation, planning. So I would encourage all members to be involved. I was looking to be involved in one of them when I first moved into town. Seems like we have a pretty good participation rate. I don't see, I think there are always vacancies here and there, but there's a lot of residents that. Are interested in serving, and obviously, as much as the town can put forward through social media, through word of mouth. People that are in town and have experience, I would highly encourage to put your name in to volunteer for a board or committee.
Thank you. Tony.
Yes, we do have a lot of volunteers who are experts in their fields, giving us time that would cost us. An arm and a leg if we were actually to hire these experts. And it's wonderful that they volunteer. I think we can, we can get more volunteers, but we also have to make sure that we turn down the temperature. Of the community sometimes, because nobody's going to want to volunteer if they're just going to get attacked left and right. So until we get a handle on, on what's going on underneath, that underlying fear and anger. You're not going to see as many people wanting to volunteer.
Thank you. Melissa.
Yes, I would absolutely encourage as many people as possible to volunteer and get involved in the town. There are so many different various boards and committees. That I feel like everyone can find something that they're interested in or that their skill set will help with. I think the town does a good job, but maybe we could do a better job of getting the word out on the vacancies on the board, various boards and committees. And word of mouth is huge. I really do think that that is the best way to tell your friends or your neighbors. About the vacancies on the various boards. Now, some boards are heavier lifts than others. And if you don't have a ton of time, but are still looking to get involved, you could just become an associate member of these boards and committees. So you're starting to learn the ins and outs of the town and more about the topic that you might be interested in. So there's definitely variations of commitment levels to many of the boards and committees.
Thank you. So the order for the next question is Melissa, Chris and Tony.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Next question. What have been some of your biggest challenges during your campaigns?
My biggest challenges during my campaign. You know, I feel like this campaign has gone rather smoothly. I've gotten out, I've spoken to many residents, business owners. I've gotten feedback from people. I really haven't had many challenges with this campaign. Last year's campaign, there were some challenges of. Some false information that was put out there that I wasn't thrilled about and. Tried to set the record straight on that, but otherwise, I feel like this campaign has been. Very smooth, and I feel like I hope that all the other candidates running feel the same way, because. The last two previous campaigns, I think, were. People were attacked unnecessarily. So I appreciate the calmness this time around.
Thank you. Chris.
Well, considering this is my first run at elective office, this might be a smooth campaign going forward, but. Obviously, being kind of a new resident in town, it's obviously a challenge to just get out there and get your name out there, meet as many people as possible. People are very busy. People are busy on weekends. It's kind of tough to catch people, but obviously, I've. Met a good group of people that have been very supportive of my campaign, and obviously, the willingness and ability to serve on the board. I understand it takes a tremendous amount of time and effort out of everyone's lives to do this. Even though it's considered a volunteer unpaid position. But overall, I don't think I've had too many challenges, other than kind of a short time crunch. And just getting to know as many people as in town as possible and hearing from them what their concerns are, what their biggest issues are, and. And trying to listen to them and hear some of my thoughts and thoughts on the matter.
Thank you. Tony.
Thank you. Well, to be honest, my greatest problem with my campaign right now is time. Turns out, running for a four-eight election doesn't work well when you have a three-thirty-one year-end coming up. I've been working with West Coast Company that we've just installed new software for, for their ERP system. So I'm working on West Coast time, plus supporting development engineers in India at the same time. So I'm working pretty much twelve-plus hours a day, just in my primary job, and then also trying to get out, meet people. And handle everything else. I want to thank the people who have been supporting me and moving me along and making sure. I set up a website and get my signs and get the door hangers. Without that extra little push, I probably wouldn't be where I am. So thank you.
Thank you. So we have time for one more question, and that will be, start with Tony, go to Melissa and Chris.
Yep, great. Thanks, Chuck. Last question for the evening. What is the best piece of advice you have ever received?
Man, that's a tough one. The best piece of advice I've ever received is to shut up. Just listen, don't talk, pay attention, and then you can make a decision.
Thank you. Melissa.
I think the best piece of advice I've ever received is. Listen. I'm always full of opinions and ready to jump out there with them, but sometimes you just have to take a step back. Listen to the conversation that you're in and, you know, get someone else's perspective, because most likely then you'll be able to. Come to a better meeting point.
Chris. So I've gotten some more advice over the years. So obviously, both in, whether it be in career and in personal, obviously, the concept of. Probably be listening more than, than speaking and listen, not be heard, but. Obviously, dealing in my position, dealing with bankers and a lot of different personalities, you can sometimes butt heads, especially coming from the regulatory side. So obviously, being prepared with all the information and, you know. Listening to the other side of the story from regulated entities, and that's been kind of a huge career. Point, obviously, sometimes you deal with difficult personalities and. To be honest with you, just letting, hearing them out, providing your side of the story, and again, if there's disagreements, sometimes you can agree to disagree. You don't have to keep arguing over a point if you're never going to convince the other side to your point, so.
Thank you. So we've now reached the time where there'll be, each candidate will have the opportunity to give a two-minute closing statement. And as mentioned at the outset, it's in the reverse order. So we'll start with Tony and then Chris and then Melissa.
I'd like to thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Nancy, Chris and Melissa for being here. The support staff that you guys don't see that are behind the scenes. For this opportunity to reach out. All I can say is I've been in town for a while. I've gone through plenty of boards, gone to many meetings. I do come up with solutions. What people trust me for is that I'm going to be honest to them. I'm going to give them a, my opinion without having to hide it, without coaching it in ways. If there's one thing I am, it's blunt, unfortunately. And I'm going to ask people to go out, not so much vote for me, I want you to go out and vote. I don't really care who you vote for. That's your opinion. I, hopefully, I've made my case, but I want you to go out and vote, because when you have a twenty percent. Voter turnout, you're not really getting a representation of who wants what in town. And if you win by a thousand votes, you're only representing maybe twenty percent of the town? That doesn't seem fair. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Chris.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks again to Reading Recap for hosting, Chuck and Nancy for moderating and asking questions, and again, Melissa and Tony, thanks for participating. It was great to have this conversation with the guys. I believe as the saying goes, brevity is the soul of wit, so I'll try to keep my remarks brief. So after we've heard tonight, the town is clearly going to face a number of big decisions that have long-lasting impacts on its residents and taxpayers. I believe Reading will need strong leadership at the select board to provide sufficient oversight and direction to both the town manager and provide disclosure to town meeting. Town meeting, voters and residents. There were inevitably disagreements on how the board approaches these competing demands. But the select board must provide solutions and reach compromises to best benefit the town. I hope to bring a fresh perspective and open mind to try to address all of these issues head-on. I would like to have a seat at the table where these decisions are, will be deliberated and ultimately made. In closing, and I will agree, similar to Tony, although I am respectfully seeking your vote, I would like everyone to please get out and vote. These spring elections are very tough. Turnout is very low. The best thing that we can have is a higher voter turnout to have more residents and voters heard. Hopefully, get your vote on or before April eighth, and just as a reminder, early in-person voting will begin next Saturday at Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa.
I want to thank Reading Recap and Chuck and Nancy and Marcel and Chris and Tony for being here and the behind-the-scenes staff. And all the Reading residents who are watching tonight. Why am I running for reelection? My motivation hasn't changed since I ran in twenty-twenty-three. I want to continue fostering positive change and progress in our community. As a candidate for the select board, my key priorities include listening to community needs. I'm dedicated to engaging with residents and ensuring, ensuring their voices are heard. This includes addressing issues related to trash collection, water rates, potholes, MBTA proposals. Fiscal responsibility. I'm dedicated to managing our resources wisely while balancing community needs with sound financial planning. We must carefully assess our wants versus our needs. There are two significant debt exclusion projects in our pipeline. It is crucial to keep all Reading residents informed of these impacts and how these projects will affect their residential tax bills. As a select board member, I would work diligently to find ways to offset the tax increases through thoughtful planning of Pleasant Street Center. I would also like to explore options. To those who are currently seeking, see, I'm sorry, currently getting the Senior Circuit Breaker Program. To help achieve our town's goals without putting residents at risk for being unable to stay in their homes. I'm sorry, currently getting the Senior Circuit Breaker Program, to help achieve our town's goals without putting residents at risk for being unable to stay in their homes. Supporting local businesses and services. Strengthening our local economy is essential. I will be actively supporting initiatives that benefit our businesses, enhance services for residents, and help build our commercial base in town. I pledge that my decision-making will always be my guide to my unwavering commitment to enhance the lives of all Reading residents. As Tony and Chris said, please get out and vote. Early voting at Town Hall starts Saturday, March twenty-ninth, and runs through Thursday, April fourth during um business hours. Or you can go to the failed house on April eighth. I hope I can earn your vote, but please, most importantly, get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to thank all the candidates for participating today and putting yourself forward uh to lead the community. And as all of you have said, uh, please remember to vote. Uh, residents can vote early, starting March twenty-ninth at Town Hall, and then on Election Day, April eighth from seven A M to eight P M at Reading Memorial High School. Thank you and have a nice night.
One moment. They can also sign up for a vote by mail until April first.
There you go. And you can vote by mail.